Okay, go for it.
Okay, I'll call the public hearing for the land sale at two twenty-four First Street Southwest.
The city of Medellin Economic Development Authority is soliciting proposals for the purchase and redevelopment of real estate parcel located at two twenty-four First Street Southwest. This property consists of two-story residential home. The EDA is most interested in proposals that will either renovate the current home or demolish and build a single-family or two-family dwelling that is compliant to the zoning code. The EDA will also entertain proposals for the demo and removal of all contents at said address with the goal of quickly marketing a buildable lot for resale. This lot is in the core of the town, one block from Main Street and five to seven blocks from the school. This property is zone R1. I have included the zoning ordinance for R1 in your council package tonight for clarification. One bid was received, Dennis Arndtzer. All items were answered and are included in the bids to middle. Land acquisition is for one thousand five hundred dollars. On the proposal, the estimated market value and project would be three hundred and sixty-five thousand. Proposed redevelopment is a duplex. Expectations of the city of Medellin disconnecting the utilities and helping take care of the tree on the boulevard. Proposed scheduled completion, the lot would be completed, completely cleared and leveled by summer of two thousand twenty-two, and new construction would be started within two years of that time, if not sooner, depending on the settling of fill, how much fill and construction cost. Tonight, we're here at the public hearing to hear any objectives or anything in regards to the sale of this land.
Nothing.
Michelle?
Do I have to leave that open for a little while?
For a little bit, in case somebody-
Can we move on to the, can I leave that open and then open up the workshop?
You could.
Okay, then let's open up the workshop and start with the siren project.
Actually, I have Wade Johnson here tonight. We didn't, I did not receive all the information in regards to the SCADA bid proposal this week, and so we will have that on the next council meeting, but since I have Wade here, maybe Wade wants to maybe talk about the project.
What's the acronym stand for?
Supervising Control and Acquisition, Acquisition Data, Supervising Control and Data Acquisition.
Okay.
It's just gonna be upgraded. I don't know, I brought in Mark Joker two, three years ago to the council meeting, and especially in the plant, the main computer, basically the brain, it's been running for twenty-six years, twenty-four-seven, non-stop. Parts in it that are, I already tried to replace a couple, but some of the other parts, he said they don't even make anymore. So, his suggestion to us, if we do not want to replace it, was to try to go on eBay and find every part that we could and buy them up, which that's just not, it was time. So, they're replacing the brain of the water plant, along with that upgrading and removing some of the electrical components and like number two, the old filter plant, number three, the old filter plant, all that stuff is obsolete. And that's older than, older than I am.
I'm assuming it's connected to a network somewhere.
Yes, that will all connect it.
Yeah, so if you go, even if we wanted to entertain the idea of trying to go on eBay and buy all those little parts, from a cyber perspective, can we keep that protected? Is something that-
There is separate security.
Okay, so that's not tied to parts themselves?
No, 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 no.
So, to give you kind of a background, we took out the water bond this last year, and this part was, this part was included in that whole total of that water bond that we took out. So, it was the water tower, the water looping and SCADA, and then also well number four. So, all of those components are in that bond, so.
Well four, right over here?
Yes.
And that pumped sand last year a couple times, right?
Yes. That is beyond repair now. It's been repaired so much that it can't be repaired.
Is it in use right now?
It is.
But it's at a diminished capacity?
Yes. The professionals estimates five years that we'll get out of it.
Now, we didn't bond for the well drilling though, did we? We did bond for that.
Yes, we bonded for all four of those.
All four of them?
Yep. So, as we know, the water looping has been completed. That came under budget. The water tower came slightly under budget, and so now this is slightly over budget, but not by very much. And then well number four, we don't know what the price is on that.
So, and when you get done installing your new computer system, that'll be a live feed thing, so you can access off your iPad or your phone, wherever you're at, so you'll know, and there's redundancy, and a second operator can have the same capability, correct?
Once everything is done, John and I will be able to run each other's plants from our-
From your own desk.
Right.
Right.
Well, yes, it's already saved me coming in a lot.
Yeah, and there's a whole bunch of nuisance stuff that you can take care of if you can access it electronically. I get the whole thing because we don't sell a new walk-in cooler or freezer anymore without internet and a program included. So, my boss can tell the customer before the customer knows that his cooler isn't running. And it saves a lot of trips, and if you gotta drive fifty miles to go fix something, it's a way to do things nowadays.
So, on February, I think it's February fourteenth actually, it's next council meeting, then I will have the two bids that came in on Wednesday this week and the actual amounts for us to approve moving forward on that project.
So, out of the two bids that came in, Wade, and I understand we don't have them in front of us, do you have a preference to either one, or haven't you seen?
I haven't physically seen them. It was a discussion over the phone, Zoom meeting. I don't remember the exact numbers either, but-
And what I wrote down, that's what I have written, but I don't wanna quote them, and that I think you have it in yours. I don't wanna quote them because that isn't actually from John. It's not big cap, so.
Yeah, we won't touch it.
Okay.
You guys are-
Right, I'm just curious, you know, if you have a, out of the two bids that came in, if you had a preference over one or the other.
I don't know. One is a local contractor and one is not. I do not have any knowledge about the outside contractor. It sounds like they're very reputable. They do water plants and wastewater plants all over southern Minnesota.
So, is it, in your professional opinion, is it better to hire somebody that does them for a profession or a local contractor?
Well, there's kind of a, I guess, there's a flip side to that. And my, the way I'm looking at it is, if we do all this stuff, I can't be down for very long. You know, where I'm gonna shut twenty downs down and things like that if certain aspects don't work right.
Yep.
If I have a crew working on a Friday afternoon and they leave and I get a call at eight o'clock Friday night, are they gonna drive all the way back to fix my problem? Or is the local guy gonna be there ten minutes to fix it? That's not a deal breaker, I understand, but it's something I have to think about as an operator.
Or is it the opposite, the local guy might not understand all the controls and the people that do it all the time?
There is that too.
Yeah. But whatever you recommend is the way I usually like to vote, just because you're the person that has to work with the supplier.
Currently, do you handle most of the troubleshooting for the system, current system?
Yeah, I try to, yes, but when I get into a little bit of a jam of technology, you know, I need some things, I can call up automatic systems.
Is that kinda gonna be your go-to after, after the fact as well?
In this project, both contractors work.
Automattic?
Yeah, so they both have their separate electrical bids in the work, but they both got sub bids from automatic.
Okay.
So, no matter what, automatic systems is gonna be in there.
So, realistically, it's the electrical that would be the bulk of the general, you know, responsibility? Any idea how competitive the bids were?
Well, again, I just wanna reiterate that I don't wanna state-
Oh, that's fine. I just wanted to see how close they were. Okay.
Okay, I don't have any more questions of Wade. Anybody else got questions for Wade?
They started construction on the power area and waiting for the weather change.
They have started. They were working with her today, actually. Tomorrow, they will not be working. There is certain, you have to be at certain temps to weld.
Yeah.
It can be so cold, you know. So, tomorrow, they're taking the day off. They already expressed that, but they will be back.
Did they give you any indication of the full process as far as directionals they thought it would take?
On a normal project, eight weeks, he said they're gonna be done. With the weather and things like that, they're looking between eight and twelve.
So, five in March or April?
They wanna be pretty much wrapped up before the frost starts coming on, because the last part of it will be getting crane in there.
Crane in the lift, yeah.
And they don't wanna be driving through a muddy field, so that's what they're shooting for.
All right.
Yeah, construction never does stop, does it?
They really will like it because they're all from Texas.
But you know, it's down below freezing in Texas, they got stuff.
Are you looking at me?
With the dirt bike?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's-
That's them?
Yeah.
I was like, what the hell? They have some walkers in the back.
They're living on a, a house on Hall Lake in Fairmont. They're going to put stainless steel screws in the tires of that thing and go driving around the lake. That's the-
Hopefully, they get some pointers before they drive in one of them.
They're saying it could take fourteen to sixteen weeks.
They wanna try ice fishing also, so.
Okay, we, got any more questions for Wade? If not, I'm gonna sneak back to the public hearing. You're not here for the public hearing, are you Travis? I entertain a motion to, I can't do anything right now, can I, except-
You closed the public hearing.
Closed the public hearing, right? Okay.
I'll make a motion, I'll close the public hearing.
A motion, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Do I have any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Now, back to the workshop. We're done with water. We're moving on to the scratch, our siren.
Yeah, the splash pad committee was canceled.
Yep.
All right, the siren, in your package tonight, oh.
No, the splash-
Wanted in Board of Adjustments and Appeals?
No, we crossed that up.
Oh, you did.
We moved those two items to the, to the-
Seven o'clock council.
The council meeting.
Oh, the actual council.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're good. I could've told you that, but it did-
Want me in the workshop yet?
Yeah, we're in the workshop and we're past the splash pad committee because they didn't meet or something to that effect.
They canceled.
All right, they canceled, so now we're up to the siren project.
All right, the siren project, the current quote is thirty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. This quote includes two sirens, one located at the park and one located at the new government center. So, the one that's currently in the park is a smaller size and it needs work. And so, we are proposing that we're putting a larger one in the park and one at the government center. And Rob and I received, what do you wanna call it, the-
The specs.
The specs on how-
Sound, sound specifications as far as coverage throughout the community.
And so, the two sirens located in those two areas would cover the most ground. We would keep the small siren that we take from the pool in the park and keep it, because that is the same siren that's at Old Village, and so we'll use it for parts. It does need a new control board right now, so it is not even operating as we speak. The light plant will be working with us on this project. They did cut, by them coming and working with us, did take off, take off a couple thousand dollars off of the original quote. They will be supplying the pool for the siren at the government center, and they will help install and remove the old siren, and the, one of the old sirens is also this one that's located on this building. USDA funding paper has been filled out, and Mike, you signed all the papers tonight. Our requirement for this funding was a conflict of interest policy, so I had to write that up. That is also in your council packet with a resolution to approve that policy tonight. Another requirement is to hold a public hearing for the siren project. This date is on the agenda for approval tonight. Meeting approval notice and affidavit also needs to be submitted for funding. If funding is approved from USDA, we would receive thirty-five percent of the project, and the other sixty-five, sixty-five percent has been, has already been allocated for this project. The other expenses to this project would be electrical. That quote is coming. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns?
So, the old one that's up here, is that going to the historical society for a-
We can, because right now, we're just taking it off of the building. We have no plans for it right now.
What percentage of the town is actually covered by these sirens when installed or proposed?
Well, with, with the current, with the new proposed sites, it'll pretty much be a hundred percent.
And also camping world.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be audible from out there. Now, outdoor warning sirens aren't designed to be heard indoors. That's why they're outdoor warning sirens, but there'll be enough coverage and distance that they'll be able to hear them from out of your location.
That means it's gonna be really loud.
Right, the inspection of them, you guys normally, or when this one was in operation, would you do that? Normally, on the first one, do they have a remote?
Yep, they're, they're electronically activated by dispatch, so they're tested once a month.
Like one o'clock on the first one?
Yeah. So, typically, I kinda start, I start a race from the north side of town next to the one up by the old Federer Building, and then try and race down to the campground in time to hear the last one activate down there, so. We know that's not working right now, but hopefully with these two new sirens, it's gonna be pretty obvious that they're both running, and I'm not gonna have to chase all over. I'll just probably hang out by the one near the, the old Federer Building, or the old Horstner Fire Building.
Okay, any other questions on the siren project? So, what else do we have before the workshop?
Anything that anybody else wants to discuss?
I do know that I was in a business the other morning on a Saturday, and the owner of the business was very appreciative of the snow removal and how our city crew goes about removing all the snow. And when Main Street had all its wind roll off the street at seven o'clock, when he got to his office, he was very impressed. So, and I did pass that on to Ben last week when that person told me, so.
So, Ben's doing a great job with the limited equipment he has. It's good.
You know, it's, the people are working as a team, and they all do what they're supposed to do. And as long as the equipment isn't broke, it all works out really well. Once in a while, there's some of those hiccups, but if the council doesn't buy them new equipment, you're gonna have a few more hiccups. So, I think it's a good deal because the other towns around don't do it quite the way we do it, and on Wednesday or Thursday last week, they were still taking the snow off the streets in Sherburne because it wind rolled most of the town to the center. And then an out-of-town contractor comes to town with a tractor and five dump trucks, and they move it off the street. And I'm going, this is five days after it snowed. You know, so if you wanna turn left, you better go the right way around the block because you can't hit over those ups. Or right, either way.
We're in the center of the similar, very similar operation.
So, when we have control, then it's been fairly nice snow to move. Except this is gonna blow around, and we're gonna have to move a couple times, but not as much. Andy, you got a concern?
Not necessarily. I was just kinda wondering, are we gonna, there's all new commissioners, new commission seats, are we planning on calling some commission meetings here after the first of the year to, one, get all the new members of the commissions on board, but also get a game plan for everything for the year?
Which commissions do you want me to call? Because I've already had a solid waste one, I've already had a planning one. Who would you want me to call?
I need to call a golf, or at some point-
I can call a golf.
How about park? Park and pool?
Park and pool might not be a terrible idea. At some point, I don't know, you might wanna let the splash pad committee tend to reconvene here.
So, the pool, I'll be meeting with the girl that you put in the place on Wednesday to give her kind of a lowdown on what's going on. As for the park, that hasn't changed. It's the same people.
Okay, so we talked about previously repairing the storm shelter roof. Is that gonna-
Yep, that's on, for budget this year.
Okay.
But you guys, we retracted it because you wanted us to come back in and do a re-bid of doing tin on it.
Yeah.
And so, it wasn't in the budget to do all of that last year, so now we re-budgeted it, and so we're going back into this year. So, we're gonna look at tin on there.
Okay, are you gonna talk to maybe the same contractor that's gonna do the library?
Uh, no, we're going to do an RFP for everything, and everybody can decide what they wanna do. As for the library, we're still trying to figure out how we're gonna tackle that one. That's a huge project, huge, so. What you looking at me, like, to what?
Leaking rooms are kinda concerning. I don't know. I know our, if it's emergency repair, are we gonna just put it off until there's other repairs that need to go with it, or what are we thinking?
Oh, I was getting right on it.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just asking. I mean, it's one thing when all the water that's coming in is solid, but it's another thing when it's actually watered. How bad was leak, or what, have we had a roofing contractor or anybody that knows roofing look at it and say, ah, this is something we could just-
James tried to call people, but nobody has actually come over.
What was James's opinion on the amount of water coming through the roof?
That it's been leaking for how long already that, let's do this the right way. And so, we've been looking through the plans and trying to figure out when the last time it was actually done. Because you guys brought it up to see if there was any warranty on anything, and we haven't found anything yet, and so that's why we haven't-
So, the leak itself is an actual, like, I need to put a bucket under this type of leak, or is it just like-
No, but our plywood and everything underneath there is all rotten, yeah. So.
And that's got a lot of different angles on it, doesn't it?
That one does, yeah.
I think we, we narrowed it down to, we can find where there's an actual amount to Mr. McMullen, and I have those minutes upstairs, but I don't have any other details on it. So, we're like looking for the warranty or whatever, but I think we're way past ten years. Help me out, Heather, I'm looking at ya. I think we're way past ten years.
Well, it's better than it's over ten years already.
Yeah.
So, I probably gave up on trying to find a warranty issue on this and just do an RFP for the whole thing and go forward. Is that what you're recommending?
At least to find out how much it is and if there's any, you know, secondary fixes that we can do and tell, we could budget for it. There isn't really a library repair budget, is there? How much of that is getting put away for?
That's thirty thousand dollars. I, that's why I brought it up when I was doing the budget. So, I'm budgeted thirty thousand dollars.
In this next, but what I'm saying is, that money's not available, and that money was available for two thousand twenty-two?
I made it available because this can't go on.
Right, but there isn't, there hasn't been money set aside. What I'm saying is, there's not money set aside right now for library repairs?
Yes, there is.
Other than what got put into this year's budget? There isn't like a line item for library building maintenance?
There is, every year.
So, how much is in that account?
Whatever I need every year, so I have to-
Oh, it doesn't carry over?
No, we never put money aside for the library.
There's nothing earmarked for maintenance of the library.
No, not for the library, no. So, I made sure that this year, we have our regular operating costs and then additional thirty thousand dollars in there for the repair of the roof. Yeah, it wasn't something that was on our radar, and I will be honest with you, I think kind of just the whole building-
Needs some upkeep.
It needs a little TLC, and so we need to get our staff back out there and start taking care of it. We did, we, we did all the lights in there, so everything was all changed out for the LED lights. We did that a year, two years ago. So, and then we did, last year, we did the landscaping where I was fortunate to have, help me out, Art. Art, what was his first name?
Eagle Scout.
Eagle, he came in and he redid the landscaping there, but we had to pay for that. So, every year, we do a project, and we've been trying to keep on top of it to take care of it, because we can't lose that building, and we-
Well, the other thing that maybe, and maybe I don't even know exactly how it works, but who currently does building maintenance on the library? Is it the street department, is whoever has time?
Well, right, no, it's pretty much everybody, but we do have James and TJ there now, like, trying to take care of it, but pretty much everybody does.
So, if you have, I mean, if you have stained ceiling tile or something in the library, you have one of your staff-
Yep, we own the building, and, and so the city owns the building. The city owns the library. But in Wat' One County, it's the St. James, help me, right? Help me out if I'm saying this wrong, Kathy, all right? In Wat' One County, the main branch is in St. James, so the- So they handle all of the employees and the supplies and everything that. But the communities, they handle the building and the infrastructure and so we take care of the library building. That is in our budget. We do not pay the employees, we just handle that. And so that's what we're doing right now.
Plus, we pay all the utilities, correct?
Yeah, the utilities, yep.
But that building is not necessarily new anymore either.
No, and that's where it should've been on our capital plan in regards to setting money aside and staying up to date with it.
That's kinda what I'm getting at, is this is something where we shouldn't be setting aside twenty-five to forty thousand dollars annually year mark? For building maintenance and upkeep?
It might be in the, in the next coming years to get it back to a rotation.
Well, I mean.
Because we're looking at, okay, the roof, the roof, then we're looking at the windows, then we may be looking at the flooring. And, and so it'll be a constant because we're to that kind of marker.
Right.
That we're gonna have to look at some of those major repairs.
Cause that building's gotta be over thirty years old?
No.
No? Over?
No, no in that.
No in that?
I would say so.
Eighties? Nineties?
I thought it was the nineties.
Nineties, it was early, early nineties.
So that'd be thirty years.
So we're at that marker that everything needs to be probably updated and taken care of.
Because we've already put furnaces and air conditioners in, so, you know. Uh, this would be the third roof and I think Bill put the other one on because of the storm.
Yeah, there was, everybody was talking about some hu- big hailstorm that went through and we can't find any, anything on that.
That's an insurance person because they had claims on every house in Dallas.
Probably just had a contractor from out of town do it, right?
I, I did my, redid my roof in twenty twelve.
Yeah.
In St. James.
Yeah, I came right across and, yeah. I did three roofs.
One of those was because, because of the storm, correct? So one of those three roofs. Probably the last roof that's on there is because of the storm. Who'd have put these things on?
Well, the original and then, uh, because shingles have a life expectancy and then. If there's a snow load and an ice buildup in the valleys, which the roof usually has and the icicles hang all the way. I can remember walking, uh, past the icicles on the north side of the building, touched the ground.
Exactly thirty years old.
Thirty years old.
So, you know, and once you get that ice underneath those shingles, they.
Oh, that's the roof need to be insulated?
And the roof probably needs to have some insulation and. Or it's a poor design to start with, but it was pretty when it was new.
Well, it's still pretty. I'm not much of a reader and when I do read, it's usually on a computer screen or on my phone, so. I'm not in there a bunch, but I could see where a steel roof would benefit the longevity of the next roof there.
Right. Except for the one hip on the backside.
Yeah.
So in the RFP, do you want them to quote up, quote both steel and shingles or are you leaning more towards steel?
That's, you know, depending on budget, I, I just don't know. Like if it was me. And, uh, for instance, if it was me and the leak wasn't bad enough to justify just automatically putting a roof on it this year. This spring as soon as possible, if it wasn't an ASAP repair, if there's something that could be done for a year.
I guess I don't wanna answer then until I get James and TJ in here.
Right, but that's, that's kinda what I would get at, you know, if it's an ASAP repair and has to be done. Before it wrecks something else, then you're probably not gonna have enough money for steel. Question out of today's steel prices.
Oh no, you wouldn't even touch it this year. Well, you couldn't get steel this year.
Well, that's probably the other thing.
You can probably get shingles, I don't think you can.
You might be able to get steel shingles, I don't know if the demand for those are, you know, if you wanted to. But that price is.
The same.
Well, it's probably fifteen, twenty percent higher than standing steel.
Well, if we can do it this year, then yeah, that would be, if we can just makeshift it until we can bank the thirty thousand this year. And bank another for the next year.
Right, but that's, that's exactly what I'm saying is if you, if you can't wait, then maybe that eliminates steel as an option altogether.
Let me discuss this with TJ and, and James, but like I said, we've been trying to get somebody out there to actually look at it and nobody's come over.
Well, part of that is there's a lot of roofers that don't work in.
In the winter.
In the winter at all.
Well, we started this project before the snow moved.
I can't believe that a larger.
Anton or Boggs or, uh, Quicker, sure.
Do you know who we all called?
James will take care of them.
I would have to thank any, any roofing contractor in the. Local vicinity, even if you had to go out and make a order out of. You all would come at least look at it and give you an estimate on it.
Let me talk to TJ and James and that we can talk to.
Absolutely.
In regards to that.
But maybe it's not as bad as, I mean, if it's been leaking for ten years, maybe it's something that can.
Well, that's.
Be patched over for, find where it's coming in and patch it over for another year or two and look at a more major extensive repair.
But have a game plan, don't forget about.
Well, have the money put aside so that you know that you can cover what you're kind of expecting. I mean, you can. Do a quick. Estimate of what's there for, you know, square and throw that, throw that into the, my arts calculator and get what it's gonna cost in material. My guess is thirty thousand for steel might not even touch material.
Okay, well then with discussing the cost or whatever, do you want me to do the RFP for the stone shelter again?
If there's money set aside, I think we should.
Cause that isn't that many square and it's an easy roof, somebody would.
Yeah, straight pitch, pretty simple.
And it's straight across all the way in one chimney.
Right.
Okay. So that.
I mean, I guess that, that leak or that roofing issue there. Probably not gonna wreck anything else, but all these things kinda have to be addressed at some point. I don't know if the park board wants to meet and discuss if they'd rather have, I would just think for a longevity purpose, if that's gonna be the one shelter that's gonna. You know, stay there for the next fifty years hopefully.
So the park board is Dave Whitney, Cody Eager and Markey.
Sounds like you have to wait till Dave's on the mat.
And like I said, the pool committee is Glenn, Cody and then that Michelle that I'm meeting with on Wednesday. She's new to the community and so I called her and asked her if she wanted to discuss what was going on with everything.
Sure.
As for all the rest, if you guys just wanna go back to the council appointments and the council, or mayor appointments, everything stayed the same. Unless you guys want to, uh, propose or change any of the boards or any that have been laid out.
It's pretty straightforward, just for all new members, just so that they kinda got their bearings and knew what was maybe gonna be discussed.
I think the big one was the planning commission, which brought on Joe and so we had the planning commission tonight and we brought Joe in. Um, the golf commission, Jake is new and so I, I do agree and I did talk to Jake the other day. That, um, we should call a golf commission. So you guys can see how great you guys did last year?
Well, part of the other, part of the other thing is in talking with Walker, not that we haven't necessarily talked about. The inner workings of the golf course at this meeting, but I think we are gonna split men's league nights. And have two, two smaller versions of men's leagues.
Okay.
Probably a Wednesday and a Thursday night men's league.
So.
Not a big finale at the end?
Well, just kinda because of how circumstances work out because it's a little more of a money revenue generator. And because I had to turn people away last year, I just think there'll be. But the other thing is I'd like for some, some way, either through email or whatever, for membership to know that their. Their golf course is gonna be, you know, kind of occupied on both of those nights and that just. You know, the Thursday night. And see if there's any resistance there at first.
Okay, so we'll call.
Probably have to get a membership roster updated and kinda send out that.
That's already done.
Okay, so maybe send out an email just notifying that if there's gonna be any major issues with that.
Uh, let's just, can we discuss this tomorrow and I'll get more details on it?
You're gonna call it tomorrow?
I don't wanna have to calling it tomorrow, but you wanna send out an email and all of that stuff, I don't know if you, let's just discuss golf.
Let's, let's just call a golf board meeting at some point before February.
Alright.
Or early February.
Alright, what other things do we have that anybody wants to discuss?
Good. Uh, anything else, uh, for the workshop? Going, going, gone. I need a motion to adjourn, no?
Second.
We got a motion and a second, all there?
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion carried.